Tuesday, January 11th, and this is the Audit Committee. Wanted to call it to order at 8:30. I just wanted to start by saying, how about them dogs? Some of y'all look like you stayed up too late last night, as do I. So I'm hoping for a good day today. Thank y'all for being here. And let's start with the invocation. Laura, thank you so much for this beautiful day. And thank you for the rights we have here in the United States, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Be with us today as we make decisions and talk about issues that are important to not only ourselves but our, and our families, but our community and our neighbors. And help us as we make these decisions and vote on motions that we make our decisions in fairness and in truth. In your name we pray, amen. Y'all join me for the pledge. Gentlemen, this being the Audit Committee, and we only meet periodically, not monthly. Wanted to have the approval of the previous meeting, which was December? Okay. That was...
Second.
Thank you. It is approved. Thank you very much. An approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to our agenda?
No changes.
Thank you very much. Moving on down on the debate agenda. Our item to cover is the fiscal year 2021 Audit Results Summary. Who do we have? Good morning, Bonnie. How are you?
Yes, I think it's my fault that you just met on the 14th and then are here again.
Oh, it's fine aside.
Very, very not well, the morning of the 14th. Sorry, much better today. So anyway, thank you. All right, so what we're going to do, I have just a couple of bullet points here. There's not a lot of exciting news here. But one of the required communications as a part of the audit results is to just remind you guys of what is the difference between management's responsibility and the auditor responsibility? And so this slide just kind of covers the bullet points of when it comes to auditing in the financial statements, what are the key points that are the responsibility of your management? And sound accounting policies, having sound internal controls and establishing and maintaining those internal controls, making sure that those financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with principles? And then if your management had been aware of any known internal control deficiencies or any known fraud, then it's management's responsibility to bring that to our attention. Then it's our responsibility as the auditors to ensure that we're properly planning and performing that audit so that we can opine on the financial statement. We have opined on those financial statements. We expressed a clean opinion, unmodified opinion on the financial statement for the year ended June 30, 21. And then it's also our responsibility to communicate with this group, the Audit Committee, any required communications and then also any other significant matters. So those bullet points of those required communications. There were no transactions for which there was not appropriate guidance, if there were. That's to your attention. There were no significant difficulties, no disagreements with management, no uncorrected misstatements, no issues that they, that your management discussed with us prior to retaining the auditors. And to our knowledge, no other consultations with other independent accountants. We are where the county does do business and has an internal audit function, but internal audit by definition is independent. So Cherry Becker has maintained their independence, required by the professional standard. And then your management also signed and gave to us a written representation or electronically that just kind of just said that they were truthful in our inquiries and didn't withhold information that would have been relevant to either our audit or to those financial statements. All right, additional required communications. It's required to bring to your attention significant estimates. We have to audit estimates just a little bit differently than we do other cash receipts and disbursements because there's not the same type of audit evidence available required to bring to your attention. The allowance for doubtful accounts, just a reserve for receivables that may not be collected. The estimated useful lives of the capital assets, how long you depreciate your equipment, your property, your buildings. There. Your investments are carried at fair value, and that by definition is an estimate. Your landfill post closure costs, that's an engineering estimate, but it is an estimate also. And then you have what we call OPEB, the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability for the estimate for the health insurance costs that are paid for retirees. That's... This year, there was one new accounting announcement that was implemented as required. It's GASB 84. And it's talked about fiduciary activities. And where that shows up in the county's financial statements, it is in regards to what formerly were known as your agency funds, and now they are called custodial funds. And so these include constitutional offices. Essentially, you're aware of that impacted your financial statements. There are a couple of new pages and a couple of sets of new information. Previously, you just had the statement of fiduciary activities, which was, just included your pension. Now that also includes the formerly known as agency funds, but also called the custodial. Those are just a bullet point list there that you see of a few new statements that you see. No change in the way that those are presented, except for just some of the titles and the presentation of those, the format of it. Actually makes the agency fund present more similarly to all the other funds. For the year 2021, you did have over $750,000 in federal awards. So you did qualify to have what's called a single audit. The Corona Relief Fund is the funds. It was the same thing that was last year. It just crossed over into this fiscal year. It applied this year as well, and we had no findings. Your management now is working hard on Implementant 87, which is where you have leases. It does change the pronouncement. That will change your net position number. It will change your total assets because you have to look at, under GASB 87, you have to look at any agreement. It doesn't have to have the word lease in it. Any agreement whatsoever that is greater than 12 months has to be evaluated to determine whether or not GASB 87 applies. And I know Leanne and her team have been working on that to determine what of those agreements do qualify so that those... So just kind of a recap. Clean audit opinion, no significant adjustments or material weaknesses, and got great cooperation. And we did issue the report before December 30th as required. It's just I was very ill last...
It's fine. Self apologize. We had so much going on that day. We did not miss it, I promise.
Do you have any questions for the Audit Committee? Do you have any concerns? Do you have anything that you would like to ask me about?
Yeah, none. I just wanted to say that, as always, I'm proud of the cooperation and work, you know, from our, from our folks. And so glad our staff was able to provide you with a solid, well-prepared financial statements. And gentlemen, she's provided us with a clean, unmodified opinion. We accept this as information. Thank you so much. Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Are there any other participation comment from the public or staff regarding the Audit Committee? Seeing none, we will adjourn and come back in two minutes for our next committee meeting. Thank you. Come on. There we go. There we go. Good morning. Welcome to the Management and Internal Services Committee for Tuesday, January 11th. I am Connie Malier, the Chair of this committee, and calling this to order. We have already had our invocation and pledge. We have a full quorum with three commissioners present. Do we have an approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. An approval of the agenda.
No changes, Madam Chair.
No changes. Let's move forward. Do we have any presentations? I don't have any on my list. I don't believe so. And as always, nothing on the consent agenda. Our debate agenda starts with board and committee appointments. Mr. Johnson, tell us what we have in front of us.
Your first item of the chair for your consideration is your board and committee appointments. These are various appointments that are made by individual commissioners to our various boards and committees. There may be some changes of these, and there may be some that are still vacant at this time, but staff has recommended approval of the appointment and reappointments of the boards and committees as presented.
Is there any questions or comments, gentlemen? Have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Now, these will go to the full board or... They go to the consent?
Yeah, you can move to consent.
Move to consent? Was that the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. So moved. What else do we have?
Next item we have for your consideration is a Homeland Security Agreement. I'm going to ask Mr. Granata, our EMT Director, to come up and present this item.
Everyone. Yes, this is from GMA and Homeland Security, an agreement that's going to give us $38,000 or $37,863 to purchase a new drone. What this drone is specifically going to do is it's going to give us the capability to detect chemicals in a fire and whatever we decide that they can use it for. So we don't have that capability right now. We're going to get 100% reimbursement for this, and staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
So moved. Thank you. And now move on to Internal Services.
The next item we have for consideration is the purchase of John Deere tractors. These were approved in the 2122 budget for the new mowing crew for roads and bridges to expand our mowing operations. We did have an amount of $210,000 budgeted for this. As you know, equipment is expensive and getting more expensive. We quoted this, and it was actually over budget, but we were able to contact Blanchard Equipment, who is a local dealer, who is also the state contract holder, who was able to quote it less than the state contract pricing for us. Total amount of the purchase is $229,966.50 for three tractors, and staff recommends approval of that purchase.
So these are three new tractors?
For a new crew that you added in the last budget.
They all have to have a tractor? Does that have, how many people on a crew?
Yeah, so each, you'll have people on the crew. Each person will be on a tractor. These are the ones that are doing our rotating...
This isn't the joystick thing, is it?
No, these are actual full-size 5,000-series tractors that will have each person on a tractor.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Thank you. Next.
Get there.
You've got some nice equipment.
What's that?
You have some nice equipment.
Our citizens expect it.
Absolutely.
They're going to get those rideaways mode.
That's right. And next item we have for your consideration is the use of Mission Square Funds. These are our forfeiture assets. When county employees pay into the plan and when the county pays into the plan, when people are not vested, those amounts are, just continue to be forfeited and continue to accumulate until we get a certain amount. Typically, we look for about $1,000 net forfeiture account before Mission Square asks us to do something with those funds. According to our policy, we have the ability to do one-time transfers to other funds. Historically, what we've done with these, since these are monies that have been paid in by multiple employees, in the past, we have used this to reduce our medical plan deficit. We still have a medical plan deficit. We feel good about our new medical plan and our new, our new rates that we just went into effect January 1st, but we are still making up a deficit. We have been doing that over several years. So staff is recommending that we use the Mission Square 401 forfeiture assets to transfer the funds into the Medical Plan Fund in the, in an amount not to exceed $1 million.
To be clear, when somebody leaves before the five-year vesting period, they get their money back that they put in, but our matching part, this...
That's correct.
That's what this is.
Actually, I don't believe, yeah, I don't believe when they're, when they're not vested, I don't believe they get their money back, do they, Jeff? Yeah, it's on a scale.
So that's where this, this pot of money came from.
Correct.
Move to consent.
Second.
Thank you very much. So moved. Next.
The next item you have is an agreement with Sunset Auction Company. This is for county surplus property. As you, I believe you know, the county code gives the county manager the ability to conduct surplus auctions. Whether we do that, typically, we do that through gov deals. Every once in a while, if we have a large number of vehicles or if gov deals is just completely inundated, we will do a live auction. Staff has come to management asking about, or administration asking about the possibility of doing a live auction. We did this a couple of years ago. I guess it's been probably five, is it five years ago? That's pretty good. Five years ago, and it was very successful. We're asking, at this time, really, the only thing that staff is asking that you approve, or what we need to approve, is the agreement with the auction company itself to conduct the sale of the items. And this would happen on March 26, 2022. It'll be overseen. I think the code says that I have to oversee it, but me or my designee will. I will most likely be there at this auction because it is a live auction. But we're recommending the use of Sunset Auction Company and recommending you approve an agreement with them as presented.
What's the dollar value, do you think, of the list of items? I know we're still adding to it right now, but it was a pretty substantial list.
It is a substantial list, yeah. It is. We have, we have a lot of, a lot of vehicles that are being surplus, a few pieces of equipment that are being surplus. So it's going to be significant. I think it'll be a significant...
We can't move it on, no... I'm in favor of this. I'm just interested. So if we have equipment that, another county that maybe needs it, we can't, there are no counties that are interested that we can move this stuff?
Yeah. As of right now, we don't have anybody that's asked for any of this stuff, but we do have the ability to pull items. If, like, if I got a request today for a motor grader, we have some pretty bad-shaped motor graders, but if we had a county that wanted one of those motor graders, we'd make a deal with them. You just approved a sale to Belton, South Carolina. We just did some stuff with Lincoln County recently and some other counties. We've done some stuff with Swainsburg in the past, so some of the smaller cities and counties definitely benefit from this. But the good thing about this is the way this works, we have surplus equipment available. If somebody called tomorrow and said, hey, I needed X, Y, or Z, I could pull it from the auction and turn it over to the other municipality. I'd bring it back to you for that approval, but we could do that.
And even after you sign this, you can still do that. There's no...
Yeah, we can, we can add, we can put items in the auction and take items out of the auction as much as we want to. I don't think there's a minimum thing that they would auction, is there? Yeah, so we can, we can go back and forth. And I think we probably will find some other surplus things that we have. There was some equipment, I believe, at some fire stations and some other things that we may want to try to auction. But we're careful about this. And I think the other thing that we proved in the last auction was if items are just going for such a low amount that we just don't feel like it's in the best interest of the county, we just, we'll no-sell that item. We'll pull those items out of the auction if we need to.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Thank you. Next.
The next item we have for your consideration is an interregional agreement with the Board of Education. This is for the use of ARPA funds. As you know, we're still in the process of getting our ARPA funds for our law enforcement and, and first responders, fire, EMS. We have applied for all those. The law did not allow for, or the, or the procedure did not allow for the Board of Education to apply on behalf of their officers. The county, the governing authority had to do it. So we have already done it, and it has already been approved by the state. But we do need this MOU in place between us and the Board of Education to be able to process that. And staff recommends approval. It has been approved by the Board of Education and signed.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Thank you. Is there anything else to our Internal Services?
No, ma'am.
We have no legal matters. Let's move on to staff reports.
Just for your information, your personnel savings, you can see that those, those savings to date are over half a million dollars. We're continuing to watch each of these positions, and you have the breakdown there, and you also have our, our turnover rate. And I believe we've got that for the entire year now, so you can see the, here for the entire year rather, all for your information.
Any questions, gentlemen? Seeing none, move on to the next report, please.
A year-to-date budget report. Reese, the folks over in finance have put this together, and you can see that our budget performance is exactly where it needs to be. Typically, the general fund, you can see our percentage collected is substantially more than our percentage used, and our percentage used is actually less than kind of where we are in the year. So I think we're in good shape as far as that report is concerned, unless you have any questions?
No, sir. No questions.
Thank you. Next.
The next item you have is your monthly sales tax collection update for SPOST. The amount we received in November was 2.7 million, a little over 2.7 million dollars. And you can see that our annualized percentage increase is 16.72%. Any questions about that? I'll try to answer those.
2.7 is November, correct?
Sorry?
Said November.
Yeah, correct.
Making sure.
Yes, right.
Interesting to see December.
2.7 for the month of November. We'll get, we typically get that around the 23rd, 24th of the month, Angie, is that right? So we should be, we'll get those December numbers, and we expect that to be over 3 million.
Right, and that's one of the things that I'm watching real closely, just thinking out years.
Sure.
Is, at what point does that tick down? The feds have pumped many trillions of dollars into this economy.
Yep.
No other questions?
And then the last item that we have is the investment report. You can see where all of our money is located. Questions on that, if you have any?
Having no questions, moving on to Commissioner and Public Comment Participation. None? I have nothing for executive session, so this committee will do this, and we will come back in three minutes for our final committee of the day. Thank you.
We've had the invocation and pledge. We have a full quorum here. Entertain the approval of the minutes from December the 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Harris, any changes to the agenda?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Chairman.
Didn't have any presentations, so we'll move right into the new business, item A1.
Prith is going to come up and talk to you about a design contract for a new fire station.
Morning.
Morning, Stephen.
Morning.
So this is a design contract with JLA for the professional services for our new fire station, Fire Station 2 at Gibbs Road, replacement of that station, so we'll tear down that station and build a new base station. That station also has a couple of other functions in the back of that. I'll leave all that stuff alone, but we are bringing in his form storage and distribution in that station, so it'll have a couple of other features in that station. But staff recommends approval of the contract for JLA to design the Fire Station 2 in the amount of $224,000, which is about 7% of the...
Remind me where we're getting the money to rebuild?
This is a SPOST 1722.
Move to consent.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Harris, next item?
Next one we have for you is an agreement with Schindler Elevator Company for the Harlem Library repair. For about three, three and a half months now, the Harlem Library elevator has not functioned. Been working with Otis. Otis Elevator has our service contract for all of our elevators. They have replaced multiple parts of this elevator. Nothing has worked. They've now told us they're going to have to replace the entire control panel, which they're going to have to build themselves. Saying the part is obsolete. They gave us a quote of $11,000 and told us they can't promise it'll work. We reached out to the manufacturer. Manufacturer elevator says we'll come in and do it for nine. We'll be done in two weeks. Agreement, I did send it over to our attorney. He has looked at it. There's some language in the agreement that he's not happy with, the way it's written. So we're still working that language. So I'd ask that we move this to debate, but the reason I'm bringing it to you is we have a contract for service. These are not our contractors, so I wanted you to be aware what we're doing in case something came up, but...
We're going to continue with the contract?
We are, we are rework, redoing our RFP right now for elevator maintenance, and we're going to put that back on the street.
We're not happy with the service we've been getting.
Does that mean you're going to spec a different brand of elevator on future buildings?
We've actually had that conversation. Steve is working on that. He's been talking to different manufacturers, like he's found one he's happy with.
I didn't realize there was another company out there.
There's three or four.
Not many.
Genesis, Otis, ThyssenKrupp, Schindler, about all of them.
This contract does carry guarantee, right?
So they're guaranteeing what they touch. It is their elevator. They built it, they manufactured it there, but they're only guaranteeing what they touch, which is some of the stuff Mr. Driver has...
He had a hearing. He stepped out.
Mr. Driver pointed out a couple of things about the contract that he wanted to make sure that they were changing, but basically saying we'll fix what we touch, which I understand. We also want to make sure if they break something while they're touching it, that they're responsible for what they break, so...
Move to debate.
Second.
Motion carries to move to debate. Development Services, item B1.
All right, the first item we have is alcohol beverage license at Doherty, 1982 LLC, doing business as speedy liquor and wine. The applicant has, has applied for an alcohol beverage license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirit for off-premise consumption from 6697 Washington Road, Suite 1. The applicant has provided all the required information and posted the notice as of December the 7th of 2021. Our office has no opposition to this. I have no opposition to this license. The staff recommend approval of the license.
Oh, what makes it speedy?
Well, I would love to know. I don't go out in that area very much.
Applicant here.
The applicant. Can you come up, please?
Going to ask him what makes it speedy?
I think you can ask him anything. Give us your name and address for the record, please. Your name and address for the record. Can you give us your name and address, please?
It's Atul Patel, 1029 Barrow Drive.
So staff had some questions about this yesterday, and I just want to make sure that I understand. Ms. Patel, you used to have a distilled spirits at this location, correct?
No.
You did not? Did a previous owner have it there that you know of? No. Okay, so this is a brand-new application?
Yeah. I applied last year, got approval.
Okay.
The construction wasn't done last year.
Okay.
Applied for that.
Okay. And then...
The construction's done?
Yeah, well, we're close, close to being done.
Okay.
We're not done. But you added, you added, I guess, onto the end of your building, correct? And you added a drive-through to the end of the building? Does that drive-through have anything to do with these alcohol cells at all?
No, not at all.
What's the drive-through for?
Ah, it's for the live hearing.
Okay. Is there any access between the, where the liquor store is going to be and where the live bait will be sold? Is there a door between the two? So you have three standalone, or I say, three standalone businesses. You'll have your current...
Yep.
Market, right? You'll have a liquor store, and then you'll have a bait shop.
That's right.
And they'll be in three individual suites.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. That, that does meet the code. We just wanted to make sure that that was correct, because the construction started and then we saw an application follow. Typically, it's the other way around, but I, I mean, it's fine the way it is.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion carries to...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Item B2.
All right, the next item we have is alcohol beverage license from Fry Enterprise LLC, doing business, bus, business as Busable Creamery and Roll On Inn. Applicant has applied for an alcohol beverage license for sell beer, wine, and distilled spirit for on-premise consumption from 7025 Evans Town, Evans Town Center Boulevard, Suite 213. Application has provided all the required information and posted the property. Business previously received a license that was automatically forfeited on September the 26th for non-use. There are, our office has no opposition that we know of on this. And based on the the location of the business, not required to have a survey of the property. This is a, so our staff's recommending approval of the license.
Questions?
Move to consent.
So all of the distance requirements have been met, correct?
Based on the.
They're not required to be met because of the plaza.
Second.
Motion carries. Planning Services, item C one.
For you today is ancillary dwelling request. This particular application is out in off a ridge road. Applicant is seeking to build an ancillary dwelling unit in excess of the eighteen hundred square foot maximum allowed by code. It's actually eighteen hundred and seventy-two square feet, and the primary dwelling is proposed to be under six thousand square feet. Want to build the ancillary dwelling first, so either way, they'll have two units on that site, one, both of them exceeding that eighteen hundred square feet, so requires Board of Commissioner approval. Staff has reviewed it and is recommending.
Why is it coming to us instead of through planning?
Because it is direct approval from the Board of Commissioners for ancillary dwelling exceeding eighteen hundred square feet. You get these, we used to say a couple of times a year, but I think it's a little more than a couple of times a year.
Move to consent.
Second.
Next up is the final plat for Wright's Farm, Section Two, located off Wright'sboro Road. Sorry. The request has been made by the applicant for all acceptance of improvements for water, storm, road improvement, sanitary sewer, rights of way and easements associated with that as provided in their plat. This will be for seventy-nine single-family lots. Staff is recommending approval contingent upon final inspections, approvals and all of that.
Motion to consent.
Second.
Motion carries. Next item?
Right around the corner, same thing. Final plat for Royal Oak in Lenzmore, Section Two, located off Chamblin Road. Same thing. This is for an acceptance of improvements to include roads, storm, water, sanitary sewer, along with the rights of way and easements associated with those improvements. Staff is recommending approval pending final inspection and.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion carries. Matters? Staff reports.
Attached for your information is December twenty-one Planning Department workload measurement monthly report. Questions you might have?
No questions.
Item?
Also included for information only is the November twenty-one Plan Review workload monthly measure.[1689.01]